Order will start with the pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements this evening. Join in Grafton celebrates the holidays home and decorating contest. A map can be found at tinyurl.com slash Grafton holiday map for viewing. Through December 18th, vote for your favorite in three categories at tinyurl.com slash Grafton holiday vote. Winners will be announced on December 20th and receive a $50 Grafton restaurant gift card. The first night of Hanukkah will be celebrated on the common at 4:15 on Sunday, December 18th. All are welcome to this community event. The menorah will be lit each night around sunset, weather depending. There will be no public hearings this evening and up first is a couple of appointments. First being an election worker.
Sure, I move the board vote to appoint June Anne Murray as an election worker for the town of Grafton.
Second, motion made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. And we have an appointment for CIPC. I believe Brian is here with us if you'd like to say hello again.
Yeah. Hi, Brian Morgan, 47 Worcester Street, back again this week. I'm excited to join this committee. I was reading the charge online and watching the minutes and it seems like this is kind of right up my alley. It's kind of what I do for a living at the same time with my job and in architecture and construction. So I think this is going to be a good fit. I'm pretty excited to get started and yeah.
Very nice. Yeah, it's a really fun committee. I've been on it for a couple of years, so I think you're gonna really enjoy it.
Right.
Awesome.
I'm happy to help out the town.
Perfect. Alright, anybody who's gonna have any questions, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to appoint Brian Morgan to the capital improvement planning committee.
Second, motion made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations, you'll get a letter from the town clerk about getting sworn in. We'll get you right on the committee. Awesome. We also have the appointment of firefighter for station three, Kevin Gallagher. You, usually how we were gonna do this was they were coming in, but not tonight?
No, only the command staff.
Command staff, okay, so I can take a motion.
I move the board, the board vote to affirm the appointment of Kevin Gallagher to the position of firefighter of station three.
Second, motion made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. And up under new business, we have the composting program update. So I know both William and Anne Marie have been working on this, so I'm not sure who wants to take the lead on that. It's up to you. Do you want, even on just the next two things, do you want us to read through this or? You know, what's in the packet type thing or?
Yeah, I mean, we just an overview.
We can put them up on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Will, do you wanna give the overview?
Yeah, I can do that. If I just wanna make sure it's big enough for everybody to see.
It's perfect, I love it.
Yeah, thank you, I do my best, appreciate that, yeah, yeah. Good group effort. So Anne Marie and I have been working on a composting pilot program townwide for a couple of weeks now. We took some initiative, we talked to three other towns that are already contracted with Black Earth who are using it. We spoke to Beverly, Watertown and?
Ipswich.
Ipswich, yes, thank you, I always forget Ipswich. They had nothing but good things to say about the program and so what we did is we sort of tried to amalgamate all of that information into a quick document talking about what we wanna do, why we wanna do it, some potential roadblocks and how we think we can use some grant money that we have available and some things that they have tried that have worked to publicize the program to get it out to everybody. So just from the top down. Obviously, one of the objectives is to develop a user-friendly and appealing program for residents to sign on to to take organics and solids out of the waste stream, which would then reduce the town's overall cost for waste management. A secondary goal would be to reach 500 users in the town. Once we do that, Black Earth composting scales the price down and then there are other additional incentives as more people sign on. As this is a largely new program, I think we have 15 households currently doing it, right Anne Marie?
Yeah, 51.
So really, one of the biggest risks is going to be communication. We need to publicize the program as much as possible to make sure that the money we wanna spend goes to good use and people actually sign on and use the service. At the moment, we have roughly $35,000 in RDP money from the state that they would like us to use. We can use this for composting as well as publicizing the program. Both of those are allowable expenses, expenses. So in talking to Black Earth, the most economical decision is they sell pallets of bins, 84 a pop for $2,100. Roughly six pallets would give us 504 bins for a total cost of $12,600, which is the goal we're shooting for. A case of bag liners costs $80 and contains 165 bags that we'll play in a little bit later. As we get more participants, we anticipate that this cost will scale, but one of the things we wanna do is anybody who signs on to the program, we wanna offer them a year of bags for the composting program as an incentive. We estimate that we'll need about $4,000 to $5,000 to cover the cost of that for the first year of the program. The idea is the town will subsidize the bin, they'll get that for free and then they just need, residents will need to sign on to the program and cover the operating costs, which are $115 for weekly pickups every six months or about $230 a year. This decreases to $160 a year when we hit the 500 participant mark. Black Earth also offers bi-weekly pickups for $59 per six months. They did not mention a discount, the more people sign on to the program.
It says 89.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
59.
It is 89. They didn't mention that there was a discount at any point and they did mention that the bi-weekly does pose some issues in the dead of the summertime when it's hot outside and the organics start to, start to rot before they can be picked up.
And I'll just note, Will, and I know I emailed you about just a couple of these things, but we are on the bi-weekly program here in Grafton right now, just so you know. Just around COVID, when they lost staff and they've had issues with staffing. So we currently are just every other week and we have been for a couple of years. Or thereabouts.
Okay.
Eight months, 18 months maybe, yeah.
So I did talk to Black Earth about that. If, you know, say 100 people sign up right off the bat and 50 of them on weekly pickup and 50 of them on bi-weekly pickup, they can accommodate that schedule, so that would be up to the individual households.
Okay, great. That's good to know, because I know people, a couple, we lost a couple of people when they went to bi-weekly, so if we can ramp it up again, I think that would be good.
Yeah, I will double check on that, but that was my understanding from my discussion with Connor.
Thanks.
So, once we have all the logistics of the program worked out, we can move pretty quickly on it. In speaking with some of the other towns, Black Earth will deliver the pallets to the DPW barn and then will deliver the bins to the households themselves, what, as they sign up. So that is one thing that is not on our plate. Bag liners can be purchased in bulk and we can use that for the year of free bags for the residents who sign up. In terms of publication and awareness, I think it would be beneficial to spend some of the grant money on this. We have the usual channels, the town website, social media, GCTV, which are effective, but Watertown did a direct mailing with all of the information on the program to all of the households in the town. And I think they hit their 1,500 household goal before the program even started. So it seems like that is a very effective way of communicating the information. Black Earth is able to print the town shields on the bins, which I think is neat and can raise awareness. Black Earth also sells customized lawn signs with the information and showing what the program is. Those are available for residents to purchase, but if we decide that we wanna purchase some of those as well and offer them to people who sign up, that is also an option. And Anne Marie, I will defer to you if you have anything to add, but that is the quick two-page rundown of what we're hoping to accomplish.
Yeah, the only thing I was also gonna, which again, I did email you just on the risks, I don't know that the, you know, being concerned about unused product, because I think what we can do is just get a pallet, you know, a pallet at a time. We don't have to commit to, you know, six pallets or whatever. So then you're just looking at 84 bins and I know I'm the one currently who, people come to my house to get the bins. So I just have called when we needed more. So I think there's some flexibility, like I think to get that lower rate, you'll have to commit to 84, but I don't think you have to commit to a higher number. So if anyone's concerned about that as a risk, that we'd be ending up with too much product in our hands, I don't think that that, you know, would be too much of a risk, I suppose, if you're looking at the 2,100 for 84. The only other thing I, I wouldn't mind adding is for folks who have been doing it, if there was some way that they could be included in, in the, in the bags. If not, that's okay, but you know, I kinda looked at it to be, come out to be about $400, like if you're looking at one of those rolls for 50 people. But that's, that's just a thought.
I think that's something we can look into. I haven't run the numbers based on that, but we can redo the projections and see how it shakes out.
I don't think anyone's gonna leave it because they don't get the free bags, but it would be a nice little perk, that's all. That $35,000 with the grant money, does that need to be spent a certain amount of time and that's why you were looking at buying the six pallets?
The six pallets is just how many we would need to hit 500. So if the goal is to get to 500 in a year, that six pallet cost is going to be incurred.
Okay.
That's why I had it in there.
Grant money's not gonna disappear, we can spend it as we need.
No, we could do the one pallet at a time.
Oh yeah, we can definitely do it one pallet at a time.
Awesome. And then has this been reviewed with the Waste Reduction and Recycling Committee? I know composting is part of their charge.
Yeah, not, not this exact thing, but I did talk to them about our, our general composting goals and utilizing that as a way to reduce our tipping fees through tonnage. So.
I think involving that committee would be really helpful in this program, especially when publicizing it and outreach is one of the goals. You have a committee raring to go and already teed up for it.
I think we're.
This is something I brought to the previous board, I think over a year ago, the composting program.
Yeah, that's why I got in that Waste Reduction and Recycling Committee as part of that charge.
I, I think we're, so are we ready to pull the proverbial trigger on? When, when is, I didn't catch the, when you're thinking the rollout of this is?
So we can run it through Waste Reduction, see if they have anything that they want to add and then it's just a matter of talking to our contact at Black Earth. There's a gentleman named Connor. He's been very receptive and open and pretty much whenever we're ready to go, we give him a call and we start rolling.
Yep, okay. So you'll have to, we, we need some kind of a, probably a period where you're collecting people, right? So, I mean, you're probably looking at February 1st. If you started advertising in the beginning of January, right?
That'd be great.
Take about 30 days. That gives us enough time to speak with Waste Reduction as well as get the product and you also probably, I don't know what the lead time is if we're gonna have them custom print the bins. Do you know what that was?
No, they did not mention that.
So that might be something to review as well.
Tie it into Valentine's Day. I love composting.
There you go.
Here's my bin.
Here's your bin.
There are, sorry, just to interject, there are 31 people still that had, so initially, they asked us to register. And so when I look today, there's 82 people registered and 51 that are participating. So there's also still people that are kind of hanging out there, just FYI.
Maybe like warm calls.
Yeah.
So one question for you, Evan, just out of curiosity. When does that grant cycle end and is that something that we can reapply for again in the future?
We, yeah, we reapply for that every year. We actually just got the next cycle of the grant, we got another $3,500 just last week. It's through the state, so we sort of automatically reapply every year. Some of that grant money has been in there for a few years and they are eager for us to use it.
Yeah.
And this is right up their alley of what they wanna see the money used for.
Yeah. I feel empowered as the Waste Reduction rep that I, I think I can speak confidently for the committee. This has been something that has, that we've discussed and that other members have been charged with reaching out to you and, and trying to transition that, so you don't have to handle it exclusively and it goes to the committee. So I don't see anybody having any sort of objections to this. The only reason I asked about the grant money and, and because I, you know, I'm excited, I guess, to say, to, to use it for some of these things. I think it's a great idea that we at least start out with, you know, one or two pallets, whether, whether we have the appetite for all six or not. I like the incentive of the, the one year. I, I would also like to offer that one year to existing customers because I hate when you're penalized, you know, in those deals. It's all about luring new customers. You know, it's, let's reward the people that have been doing it so far. Yeah, so the other, the only other thing that we discussed in addition to this as a committee, we're also subsidizing some of the home composters that we're doing now. So I mean, we have, clearly have plenty of grant money to do both. I am a big proponent of outreach and, and, you know, pushing it on social and definitely doing the direct mail. Yeah, I think, I like how this has been, this has been buttoned up and I like where it's headed.
How big is a pallet of these, just to understand?
48 inches by 48 inches.
Oh, okay, so it's not gonna take up a huge amount of space if you could get all?
No, we have, we have space.
Pounds are like about the, the, maybe the height of this table and maybe that would. And just to note also, I think even, I didn't run the numbers, you did better than I did, but on the the bags, as someone who's been doing it for a while, the bags go a long way. So I only, I use one large bag every other week and maybe, you know, two to three small bags. So if you were looking to supplement the folks that are already doing it and additionally supplementing people for a year, the bags, it lasts, yeah.
I, I think, so the only other question I have is where are, who's, where are these bins being? Like, do they just sign up and, how do they get the bin?
In talking to Connor, when we order a pallet of bins, it'll be shipped to the DPW barn and then Black Earth during their route will drop the bins off.
Okay.
And we discuss this with DPW?
Right, how do they access them out?
That's fine.
Okay. Alright. Now we can use my.
Keep using Anne Marie's yard.
Yeah. She gets a sign.
So, but they'll just head up there, they'll grab them and then they'll drop them off to the resident?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
By the way, they offered us signs recently, like I think we probably could get some signs for free because this is benefiting them ultimately, right? So I have a sign and they emailed out to the, those of us that are people doing it.
Twist their arm, Will.
Okay.
Having one of those signs that we were talking about for in front of town hall to promote this would be another reason why we should get one of those signs too. Thanks, Colleen, you should get the plug.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the repetition there, that's great.
Alright, so do you need a motion from us on this at all or just?
I don't think so.
Continue having discussions?
Yeah, I think this is all the approval I need to keep running with it and I'll keep Anne Marie up to speed on what's going on and when we have an update, we'll give you one.
Do you mind presenting it to Waste Reduction and Recycling Committee too, just for, you know, involvement?
Not at all.
If you want to, or either one, yeah, you can do it.
Yes.
Somebody.
So we had, we had a miscue with getting the agenda posted. We were originally scheduled to meet tomorrow. We haven't set a, a follow-up date. I'm assuming it'll be next Wednesday. We're gonna try and sneak one in, so if you're available, great, if you're not, I, I really, I think we could confidently move forward. My bigger concern is kinda trend, either transitioning this off Anne Marie's plate to you or transitioning it to the committee.
Yeah, I appreciate all invitations in writing with gold leaf, but then I can definitely be there on Wednesday.
Alright, do you need an eagle like to deliver?
Excellent, alright, so for Donald Composting, we move right on to Trails Committee. Okay, so I can speak to Trails Committee. This is a, an offshoot of Open Space and Recreation Committee that's been meeting for just over a year now. Reviewing the Open Space and Recreation Master Plan that was generated 20, 20, 21? I'm looking at Dave because he's in the committee, he's the chair of the committee. So what, after looking at the master plan, in addition to our discussions related to all of the objectives and, and goals that were set out in that master plan, we thought that the formation of a Trails Committee would be a favorable thing for the town to consider. Again, I can go through what you have in front of you and I know Colleen, you came up with another draft, but just an overview is just what we're thinking is a committee that would kind of oversee more globally, the trail system in our town. So we are fully aware that we have the Grafton Land Trust involved, that we have conservation involved, recreation is now getting a little bit involved. So just kind of an over, I don't know, larger committee overseeing the whole thing and looking at maybe, you know, are we missing opportunities in connecting trails? Because we have different entities looking at different areas. Are there other ways that we can, you know, support these various committees, both town committees and outside of town committees and their mission to, you know, form trails and maintain trails? And then also looking at trying to come up with a, and, you know, a mapping system that includes all of the trails from all of these various components. So it's a little bit of an overview, I suppose, we kinda came up with the five Grafton residents, that would be the structure of the committee. So, do you mind just pulling it up so everybody can?
I only have the old version of the document.
Keep the one that's in the packet?
The one in the packet. What's the difference between this one and the one in the packet?
Oh, they're very different, I wouldn't pull that one up, that was just mine to add to the conversation.
Okay, so, yeah, pull that one.
Oh, okay.
So the general goal is responsible for developing, enhancing and overseeing the care of trail system in Grafton and encouraging its use. Again, like I said, we're gonna explore ideas for interconnecting Grafton open spaces, working with all of those committees that I, I mentioned already. And then the committee would obviously be involved with either the land owner and/or the entity that has jurisdiction over whatever particular property we're looking at. I said five members with the usual three-year staggered terms, reporting to the select board, I think we said annually, I'm not sure if that's in here. We would obviously have a, a chair and somebody taking minutes regularly reviewing. I'm sorry, so we conduct our meetings in accordance with, you know, bylaws and regulations. Enlisting volunteers and whatnot to assist with various projects and really coordinate with town boards and the land trust and anyone else that's involved and/or has a interest in, in creating and maintaining our trails. I don't know if I should, anything else?
So did, did you write this, that's what's in our packet or did, did you get this from another community?
Well, I think that one of our committee members looked at other commit, well, a number of us looked at other communities. And so there was one member of our, our committee that came up with this.
Okay.
Probably in, similar to the next one in conjunction with, you know, some of our wording.
Yeah, just because, you know, some of it, some of the things that stood out to me is like, these people are gonna be elected, like election results shall be reported to the select board promptly. That, that seems confusing, so, so tonight, you're just bringing it to the board as something to say, is this something you wanna look further into? And then we can come with a more refined charge in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, and that's what that was?
I think that election results is only pertaining to the chair, you know, chair, vice chair clerk. I didn't, and I didn't read that as elected members. It was that, once the committee's formed, they'll report back to the select board whichever members were elected to.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was relative just to chair and the clerk. And then resignations will be submitted, but we can tweak that wording, that's fine.
Okay. Do you think five members is enough for this committee? This committee seems like it's gonna be a lot more hands-on, a lot more physical and I didn't know if a larger committee made sense.
Well, it's interesting you're asking because my next one, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, we did a little bit of that going back and forth. How many people are alternates, would that be a consideration? And then, yeah, it gets, and then do you want people from various, do we want somebody from land trust, conservation, so on and so forth? So I think on both of these, we kinda came back to just maybe keeping it simple, opening up just to residents. So I suppose we could do, I mean, you could do, can you go like five to seven or something versus, you know, the concern is then yeah, you're hoping that you're gonna get more than five for sure, but maybe keeping it a little bit open-ended, if that's possible.
So, so the two committees, the, the next one and this one are very different to me, so I could see why one has benefits of being a larger committee where one could go off the rails being a larger committee. So I could see why the next one would wanna be smaller. This one, you guys are literally hiking trails. So many hands make like work, the more people out there hiking the trails, the better. That's the way I viewed it and, and maybe not even assign membership, just all at-large members, you know?
Yeah, and I think that's what we ended up doing, right? We didn't assign, did we?
No, I don't think you had any committee representatives on there.
Cause again, we talked about that on both of these committees and again, would be great, somebody from conservation, somebody from recreation, et cetera, to be on there, but I think delineating that and the reality of some of those folks and their time commitments and whatnot. So great if, you know, three of the five or three of the seven were folks that were already involved in this, but if not, that's okay too, we can act as a liaison. So we kept it open, but we could go five to seven? Or more? I'm not envisioning like, we're not gonna be doing trail, maybe some trail maintenance, but it's kinda more of a over, like a larger body, kind of overlooking the whole bigger picture.
So one of the, the first things, the committee shall regularly monitor trails before conditions, maintenance and needed improvements. So that seems like a really big part of it.
Yeah.
So you're saying that's not something you want for this committee?
We've gone back and forth on that, yeah.
So should this go back to the Open Space Committee for more refinement before?
Yeah.
I can't speak.
Come on up, Dave.
Alright now. Our, our extremely large and very interested audience can hear what I have to say for what that's worth. But yeah, I can't speak for the whole committee, but I think this is sort of our, a, a kind of a starting point. And, yeah, I think, speaking for myself at least, I, I would not object to, you know, basically sending this back to the committee for further refinement, considering some of the discussion you've just had. As, as a little bit of background, this comes, as Anne Marie noted, this comes out of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, where in the development of that plan, we recognize that trail systems today in, in Grafton are largely bifurcated. This land trust, they have a whole, a whole lot of trails and they're responsible for maintaining them. We have a lot of trails on Conservation Commission land and, you know, the Conservation Commission itself or through the DPW is responsible for maintaining those. But what's missing is something, something that sort of coordinates those two systems of trails. And we've had many discussions over the years about, you know, coming up with a comprehensive map of all the trails in Grafton. But because the responsibilities are so divided, there's, there's just no place to do it. And so that's primarily the role that the Open Space Recreation Plan envisioned for this committee was to, you know, kind of act as a coordinating body and that, not to take on, you know, any detailed responsibilities for itself, but more to coordinate the, you know, the development, maintenance, mapping, whatever, you know, of the trail system we have in town.
Okay.
If it's of any historical interest, there actually was a Trails Committee that existed from 2000 through 2004. I don't know what that Trails Committee, why it was created or what its responsibilities were, but that's really kind of irrelevant to, you know, what the Open Space and Recreation Plan wanted to see going forward. And a minor detail, the, the OSRP initially said, the Conservation Commission should create this Trails Committee. The Conservation Commission said, hmm, that's really not something we wanna do. So it became a proposal for an independent committee and that's where we are.
Okay, so what we can do is we can go back to the committee, we can talk about if we wanna increase the numbers. I think we can tweak the language in terms of overseeing the care of the trails. I don't think that was entirely our intent, however, I think that the committee, once it's formed, will probably actively be involved in some of that if needed. But we can, you know, tweak that so that it's not so overbearing in the first sentence there and then maybe just. And then maybe just, um, highlight, you know, that we're looking at as a, as a coordinating, that was the word I was looking for, um, body for the trails. If that would be helpful.
Yes, so some of the suggestions on the secondary charges that I brought in was, you know, number four, coordinate and oversee the publication of trail maps and guides. For use by the public.
Yeah, that, we had that on ours, yeah.
Encourage public involvement, engagement, planning, management and use of trails by holding at least one public forum annually to solicit input and ideas and any concerns. From residents that might be using the trails, and maybe even coordinate or manage and adopt a trail program if appropriate to coordinate. Um, you know, volunteer driven projects like the Eagle Scouts or Boy Scouts, things like that, and I think that is more of the vision you're looking for on this committee. And not necessarily going out and maintaining the trails.
Correct.
That's certainly true.
Yeah, again, I think that the committee might in fact do some of that, but that wasn't our goal. So yeah, we can tweak it and we can look at this, read, I didn't have a chance to read this, obviously, so we can bring this to the committee and, and tweak it and come back.
Okay, great.
There were in, in the OSRP, there were seven specific action items that ended up being assigned to the trails committee. I, I don't know that that, I mean, we, we could even go so far as to itemize those in the committee charge to provide more context, but. At the same time, I don't know that we would want to limit this committee to just those exact seven action items. But that does, that does kind of set the context for what we're trying to do.
Right.
Good for us to have that info though, in it, whether it's in the charge or not, just what those action items are and review those things.
I had it, I was gonna bring it with me too.
That's fine. We have it, but I, I, I like, I, I think I kind of lean towards a hybrid between, um, you know, the charge in the packet and, and what Colleen has here. When I initially read through it, I, I also thought it was more about, um, maintenance and, and. Kind of agreed on not having representation on the committee, but now that, um. It feels like it's more coordination and advisory, I'm wondering if we, we should have at least a couple. You know, a couple, uh, uh, other committee representatives, maybe one from, um, conservation commission, one from rec. Uh, you know, not, again, I, you know, hate to add to everybody's plates, but if, if the overall goal is. More coordination between the two, I think it might be effective to have, um, you know, necessary representatives there. Uh, and, and in that case, um, I don't have strong feelings on a, a five or a seven member committee. But if you start to decide that it feels like we're getting appointment heavy, um, you know, I think there's, there's a good need to have some. Some at large membership there, so if we can, if we can have a couple appointed members, uh, and keep some at large seats at five, great, if not. Um, you know, consider moving to seven, I guess.
Considering, considering that the two bodies that are primarily doing trails here are the land trust and CONCOM. Those two, it might be worth considering having representations from those two bodies on this.
I will say that on our committee, on the open space and rec committee, there is, um, meant to be a conservation representative and we haven't had that person. And so there's, you know, an issue with, so that was for me, like clearly it's too much.
One of the ways around that, when you start running into that, um, kind of, you know, time crunch of people not having enough time, they volunteered for one committee and. Is that you have them, you know, the trails committee shall check in, you know, she'll have a joint meeting with the conservation commission. Once annually, right, and so you just put that in your normal meeting rotation and then people can, you, you can confer that way. And, and maybe add that as a jump off point, but then you don't have to have somebody that's on the committee for every.
Yeah, and we, we, right, we need, we need the coordination between the bodies, we don't necessarily need literally a member of the conservation. On the trails committee if they're going to meet every month, or I, I don't know. You know, the frequency of meetings is probably yet to be determined for a trails committee depending.
It'll probably be relatively spaced out, I would anticipate, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'd be agreeable to that too.
I'm not sure if we have a meeting set up, we were talking about the new year, because we have a couple of other things that we're, Dave's working on before that.
The, the, the open space and rec committee, they're our next scheduled, our next planned meeting is January.
The third week, probably the third Wednesday.
Wednesday of January, whatever, whatever the actual date is on that.
Okay, sounds good, and then, uh, just let me know when you're ready to bring it back to, uh.
Okay.
Yeah. Get it back on another agenda.
So, just, yeah, it's January eighteenth is our, our committee's right next to it, so yeah, we can, we'll put this on the agenda and, uh. They'll come up with a, and a new and improved proposal, bring that back to your board maybe the, the week after that, if that. Or the next, the next select board meeting after the eighteenth, which might not be till, uh.
We'll figure it out.
But whatever.
When this committee forms, I'm totally telling them about the apples, like it's happening.
Sounds like a plan.
All right, up next is the environmental sustainability committee update with, again, Anne Marie.
Thanks, Dave. So this is our, so what I did was I reached out to a number of folks that I thought might be, have some interest in not only that, but expertise, so I'm going to. Start by, um, this isn't my area of expertise, it's a passion of mine, environmental sustainability, et cetera, but. Certainly not my area, so I'm reached out to other folks that, that I knew, um, could help in that respect. So in any case, we came up with a, a charge, I did have a couple of conversations with, um, Evan. And just have a little bit of a different document maybe to hop up here, but in terms of the mission committee charge, do you want me to go through that or?
Yeah, I would, I would present what you would like us to discuss tonight.
Okay, so we're going to provide leadership and practical solutions on sustainable and environmentally responsible practices within the town of Grafton consistent with the climate goals of the Commonwealth. Committee shall work in consultation with the select board, town committees and various town departments to assist town government, businesses and residents. To implement sustainable policies and practices, the committee shall increase the public's awareness of important environmental issues throughout, through education and outreach. Proposals will be guided by the environmental and economic cost of actions and inactions. By fostering environmentally friendly practices in Grafton, the committee aims to enhance the quality of life for our residents, visitors and future generations. Our goals, to promote air awareness and knowledge sharing of sustainable and resiliency practices for the Grafton residents. Um, to recommend measures to reduce energy cons- consumption, waste, greenhouse gas emissions and lead by example. From municipal and school campuses, and to create an environment, environmental strategic plan that considers forward thinking policy and strata- strategies. To better position Grafton to solicit and obtain grants to assist in funding sustainable initiatives. Um, this is where we, I'm changed, I was waiting for some feedback, but in terms of communication reporting. More realistically will be an annual report to either the select board or the town administrator if. That is the person who's going to, um, appoint this committee. Similar to what we were just discussing with the previous committee, um. What we're thinking might work better is. Not having a set number of members and not having specific folks, so we've kind of gone back and forth on that, right, so. Obviously, open space and recreation would be wonderful to have somebody on this committee, public schools, planning board, DPW, et cetera, conservation. But perhaps the reality might be more to what Evan was just speaking to is that we would. Check in with those departments on a regular basis, so if this committee is meeting every other month, for example. On each, you know, planning board will be the first meeting, conservation will invite them on the next one, or we'll go to one of their meetings, um, as opposed to having. A delineated representative from that body on this committee, that's not to say if someone from all those committees wants to be on this committee. That's wonderful, but it wouldn't be part of the charge, so thinking, um, and the committee we've discussed it via email. Looking at. Feedback in terms of who will appoint the committee and or that the committee would, you know. Consist of, say, a minimum of five to seven people and then leave it open ended a little bit more like the, um, like the cultural council, I think. Kind of functions that way, so. This committee will look to have folks that come with very, you know, variety of expertise. And a variety of different areas that we can then help the town in making, you know, informed decisions. And, you know, finding maybe grants out there or finding different programs that we might want to be involved in. Um, so that's how I'm envisioning this committee, and even just the meeting that we had. It was a great, you know, table of people that just came at this from different perspectives in terms of environmental conservation, resiliency, et cetera. And one thing that we did want to make sure is that we had, um, we offered an opening to at least one student of the public schools, Grafton Public School.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
So when, when, uh, Anne Marie and I met to talk about this, um, and so one of the things that. We had gone back and forth on and that I had thought might be prudent with. If this committee was formed under my office, so under the town administrator's office and plays more of a. A- advisory role to help guide policy deci- decisions that come out of my office and that ultimately affect the rest of the town. We could do this in a, uh, less regimented way, so as far as your. Members of the committee, you don't have to have a set, you don't have to say, you know, nine, because you're going to have. Officers and voting and, you know, i- i- you could do it in a looser way, um, so that you could have people of different. Practices that could be on this committee that could be even more transient, right, so you could have more people that come on that. Have a specific passion that are trying to get something accomplished in their town, that they can then push up through my office to. Coordinate as far as how you would actually execute those things.
Do we have any town administrator appointed committees right now that would be an example?
You, you have ones that are, like, I appoint the rec committee. There's probably more that I should probably know off the top of my head, uh, veterans advisory is not me. Um, there, there are, there are a few, um.
So I'm just trying to picture how that would work, like, would they still post agendas and minutes?
Yeah, so I, I was looking at what other, yes, it's still open meeting, it's still all the rest of it, um, I was looking at, uh, some other towns that do it. Environmental committees that are a little bit more ad hoc, um, so they're almost like a. Like an advisory board as opposed to like a, a standard committee. And so if, if interested, we could definitely pursue it that way. And see how that, how that, how that goes and, and if the group likes that. Um, that type of approach, um, or the board could take this as a select board committee and. You know, you just have to, you have to structure it a little bit. More, more clearly, right, you gotta pick your, pick your number so that you, you know, you have your quorum and all the rest of it.
So the original thing in the packet came in with that, and then I just had that modification where we're kind of thinking about. Having it be a little bit more ad hoc, um, and I think that the benefit, rather than just thinking of having, like Shrewsbury, for example, just has a group. Um, not related to the town per se, you know, in any way, doesn't report to anyone in the town, but the benefit of having us fall under the town is. I mean, gives certainly the committee more credibility, um, more access, you know, to committees and boards up here. Um, and I think we would be able to impact change in a more formal way.
So you think if it was a town administrator committee, you would have more access to information than if it was a select board committee?
No, no, I'm saying, like, say Shrewsbury, it's an, it's, so the last time I brought this, I think the conversation was a little, well, it just. It doesn't have to be a town committee, you know, it just could be a, a group, right, um, so no. The town committee either reporting to the select board or the TA, whatever we decide on is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so the Shrewsbury group is its own entity, right, it's got a dot org website, um, it's sustainableshrewsbury.org. And so their, uh, think, and, and I didn't do a ton of research, but seems like they sprung out of, uh, an effort to stop. A pipeline and then grew into like the, doing other advocacy, so they're not. They're not a town appointed committee in any way, but they seek to influence. Uh, Shrewsbury government to head in the direction they want to go.
Versus like Hopkinton, they have a really, a good, solid, I think, um, committee, and I've been in touch with the folks over there. Hingham's another good example. So a presence on the website, you know, presence here, so it's either the question, well, so the question is twofold tonight, here's our, you know, new charge. Let's say for the sustainability committee, and now the question is, A, if we're on board with. Creating the committee and then B, shall it fall under the town administrator or the select board? And the committee likes the idea of a little bit more, could have more members, a little more openness or, or, I don't know. About openness, but, um, flexibility falling under the town administrator.
Are you saying this committee is already formed?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, I heard you say.
Oh, the people that I met with.
Just out of curiosity, how many, how many people have you met with, uh, in regard to this?
So there's just a few of us that got together, um, a handful of folks, but I've been talking about this to everybody. That I meet, I have not met anyone that is, has any issue with, you know, us doing this or sees a reason why. This would be, you know, not something we want to pursue, so I'm talking to everybody about this, but I, like I said before, I reached out to a few folks that have more. Expertise in this area, um, after our last, my last time of presenting it, so no, there's not a committee. I have my green up Grafton site, that's just a Facebook page, but it's led me to a lot of folks who have some great background.
Okay, so it's a lot of information that, um, wasn't in the packet, so it was difficult to consider some of that. I wasn't really planning on trying to decide whether it be the town administrator or a select board committee, it was presented in the packet as a select board committee. So it's the first time I'm hearing that, I'm not totally sure I understand the main difference between those two. Um, I will say the charge that was in the packet, uh, there's a lot of things I'd like to change on it to make it very clear that it's an advisory committee. And it's going to be making recommendations and not creating policy and not creating, um. Anything other than advice and recommendations, um. So I don't know if you want to.
But so when you say not creating policy, as in?
Well, it's an advisory committee.
Right, so like not talking about bringing things to town meeting or bylaws or any, those might be things that this committee might look at doing.
But that would be okay, right, I mean, it's, it'd be bringing, because you're bringing it to town meeting for a vote. Or before the board, or at least before Evan, you know, who to sign off on those things, you're worried about them. Functioning unilaterally and making decisions on their own.
Right.
No, yeah, we can put, create whatever wording you'd like to assure you of that.
Yeah, I think I, I would need to see this charge, um, more polished and reflective of what it is you're, you're saying versus what I'm reading, I guess. I mean, promoting awareness and making recommendations to, you know, reduce greenhouse gas emissions and things like that, that's, that's great, but how do you? How are those measurable goals, like how are you going to know if, if you've reduced greenhouse gases in Grafton?
I mean, we have to look at this in a, we're not going to be coming up with measurable goals, um, we need to, to do these initiatives. Whatever they may be, um, whether we can measure that week to week, month to month, year to the, to year. Um, I won't be able to measure that for you, perhaps I can find somebody, you know, a scientist to hop on this committee. And look at it over the course of years, but these changes that we're making, me composting or, you know. Turning off my water or whatever the case may be, putting solar on my roof, I'm not going to be able to measure that in terms of change. Um, in the near term, probably in the term that I might be on this committee, for example, so.
But there, there are ways to measure a lot of that, right, so you know. Depending on how many, how much energy your solar panels create, that's X number of tons of carbon that don't go into the air. If we switch the municipal fleet to all administrative vehicles are hybrid or electric, you know. The difference in fuel usage between those two, so you could measure that, we do a lot of that already with. Not on the resident side per se, but on the green communities stuff that we do. We, we are calculating a lot of those metrics because we're supposed to be reducing our fuel consumption by twenty percent and hitting our, our carbon. Goals and, you know, all these other things, so there are ways to do that, um, I think it depends on. You know, if we're looking for that level of reporting. Which, uh, you know, again, that's how you measure success, right, is how much sequestration you get or whatever it is you're trying to do and whatever thing, so like. We talk about the composting program, right, we should be able to. Hopefully, I, I don't know that at five hundred people it's appreciable, but you should be able to see a difference in your, your tonnage, right? Because you're taking all of those tons out of the waste stream, um.
But you won't see the change in, let's say, the methane gas that's being created.
You would have to, you would have to take the metrics that are available for, uh, on average, this is, you know. This is, I, I can't, I just was reading a thing that says like every three chickens you have. In, in a person's backyard is, in, in, is an extra like forty pounds of, of food waste that doesn't make it into the waste stream every. Year or every month, I can't remember what the metric is, so you take those baseline metrics and apply it towards whatever goal you're trying to breach, I think. It's a long winded way of saying that last sentence.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. Okay.
All right, so are you going to refine this charge to bring it back to us to review and look at so it looks like one of our typical charges?
Sure.
Is that where we're leaving it tonight?
Yeah.
Do we wanna discuss some of the things that we would like to see in there or?
Yeah, thanks. That'd be great.
Yep. For, I'll kick it off. For me, I appreciate that we're gonna have a little more time to sit with this and, and go through it. I think in our discussion, it makes sense that this be advisory to the TA, because I know we just discussed how we, how we can measure some of those metrics, but I've, again, and this is, this is personal feeling, I don't have anything to, to back that up. I feel like a, a board committee is more adherent to those metrics and, and seeing results as opposed to an, an advisory committee, which I think this is, is meant to be and meant to pass along, you know, like a think tank, more or less, to, to pass along those ideas to the TA, which he can then vet and, and go through. If there's, I think, some reciprocity there where, where maybe you guys are looking into some grants and taking some of that work off of Evan Williams' plate, you know, and, and can offer some assistance there, tho- those types of things would be great because, you know, grant writing is, is one of those things that tends to be a, a full-time job in itself. You know, I, I, I think, I like the idea of, of some give and take there, but that, to me, I think makes sense that it, it be a, you know, a, a committee, a little more open-ended, you know, and, and advisory to the TA, I think, I think that's where you can make your most impact.
I think so, yeah.
I like the idea that you included a student in there as well. I think, I think that's an important piece of the puzzle.
We have one tonight. The word got out.
I'd like to see more clarity behind how you're going to, you know, you keep saying raise awareness, promote awareness, you know, through education outreach. If you could highlight, you know, we'll start a website, we'll do, you know, X, Y, Z, so that those are, those are measurable goals that we can see implemented fairly quickly, rather than just these vague raising awareness, which is a lot of a goal and it's great, but it, it keeps you saying raising awareness. How, how do you plan to do that? I think to give the committee some direction would be good.
So other charges have specifics like that? Like, I mean, we can, sure, I can write out, we'll have a presence on the website, we can do our, our own website, we can be at every farmer's market, we can be at the senior, like, how specific, I mean, I can list all those, you know, a bunch of things out if that's, I don't think any, I didn't notice that on other boards per se.
Okay, well, some of the charges do have goals, and that I would just prefer to see some more, you know, clarity on. I guess I just.
Like how, how that outreach comes to be, if, if we're targeting, like you said, websites, social, you know, flyers, I, I don't remember if it's at this one or the other one. But you mentioned, you know, flyers at key locations, things like that. Is that?
Yeah, cuz I, I still struggle to see, see how this committee isn't already happening in Grafton, right? All of the departments are working on this. We have greenup Grafton, so as far as the municipal side and, and as far as I even know, the school side with their recycling, they're all doing things that they can be environmentally sustainable. And then we have the Waste Reduction Recycling Committee who is focusing on things like that as well. We just talked about our composting programs. I'm just wondering if this isn't already happening, but it's spread out in a bunch of different ways, and, and what specifically is about this committee is valuable that isn't already happening?
So one example I can come up with is just the person who brought the tar, the sealant, and it became a bylaws, is an individual who did this in May. And nothing has happened about that in the, in terms of town, like rolling out, letting people know who we should be using, who we shouldn't be using. That's just one small example, you know, of an initiative that was undertaken, and that could be something a committee like this could take on.
So for that example, I believe it's because it's banned at the state level as well. So you can't really buy those products, is my understanding. They're not sold at Home Depot and Lowe's and things like that.
The guys that come and do your driveways, they're still being used, is my understanding. Again, not my area of expertise, simply, it's just one example of an initiative that that we could have, we could go bigger on and maybe have more impact. And is it, are we even adhering to it in town? I don't know. I think we have guys, people coming in potentially putting stuff on driveways that perhaps still have carcinogens. Again, I'm not.
Right, but you don't know is the point, so we might not either, is what you're saying.
Well, some, we could find out, we could do that outreach, right? We could contact every company, this is what other towns have done. Contact the companies, these are the companies we should use, this is what they're using, so on and so forth. That's just a small example. What else could they do? You know, could we be doing, so there's solar panels, I guess, on the roof here. What else are we looking at in terms of that? Carports, solar? Is there really a concerted effort, you know, at the town level to look at different initiatives? We just built the library, probably would have been a great time to throw a, a solar carport over there, maybe at the high school. Again, these are, this isn't my area of expertise per se, but I do think that if you bring people in that have the expertise and all these little pockets, that we can do a better job as a town. And I look at what other towns are doing in this realm, and I just think that we can do it as well. And Greenup Grafton is just a personal web, it's just a Facebook page, it's not a committee, it's, you know, it's just a, a little Facebook page that's grown and it's great, and we get some great initiatives, initiatives out of it. The rain barrel program was something that somebody brought up on there, so that's great, but.
But it's just like the Shrewsbury Initiative where it, it started as a small group of people, but it, it's grown and it's some, it's not nothing either, so it's a helpful group. I, I guess that, that's where I'm just struggling. I just, I wanna see the value of what this committee is gonna do that isn't already happening in Grafton.
I can keep, you know, give me, I can write out some ideas of, that I have of things that it can do. Yeah, I can keep at it.
Yeah, cuz I, I mean, I do think.
If you wanna send me some feedback too, because you all saw the, what was in the packet, so and you saw, you heard me last time when I presented this. So if you have ideas or examples that would help, I just, I don't know why we wouldn't do it.
No, and I, I agree. I, and I just think that we already are doing it. Not that we wouldn't do it, I just think that it's already being accomplished in different ways. So I'm just trying to understand how this committee can add value to what's already being done, that's all. Because I do think that there is a lot of environmental sustainability happening in a lot of different ways. You know, again, we just talked about the composting program, we have the rain barrels program, we have a lot of town departments doing that and trying to find more friendly, environmentally friendly ways to do things. So how is this committee gonna add value? That's what I'm looking for, and that would be really great if we could rework this to, to see that.
All right, do you guys have any other questions or comments, or do you just wanna bring this back in a future date?
Yeah, put me on for the next meeting.
Okay, I think that's January third or something like that.
All right, up next is the ninety-five North Street contract, which we got this afternoon. I'm gonna have William present that.
Yep. So I do apologize for sending this to you so late in the day. We got our last round of edits from town council today, so it is now in its final form. This is for the second stage of the passive recreation park at ninety-five North Street, which Recreation Conservation in my office started working on a couple of months ago. We contracted with Ray Dunnage Landscape Architecture to do all of the preliminary designs, which we then presented at town meeting and voted on. And this is now for the next step, which is all of the permitting, preparing bid documents, administering the bid for people to actually come in and do the work and functioning as the project manager for the, uh, construction of the park for a total cost of a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Perfect. Does the board have any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I can take a motion.
Move the board vote to approve and sign the ninety-five North Street contract as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye, opposed? I don't know if I heard you.
I meant to say aye.
Okay, all right, so all three and no nays, so declare the motion carried. Up next is the annual license renewals.
I had a couple of questions with these, and they probably come up annually, and I'm sorry to be the person to ask them this year.
It's okay.
So, as I was going through the list of, of some of these businesses, and it was just a, a couple that I knew of. Are these current license holders that are reapplying? Because there are some on here, like Sam's Auto in North Grafton. I believe that's changed hands twice and over the last couple of years. I don't think the, the previous owner has anything to do with it. So I mean, maybe he's just like, subletting that license or?
Yeah, these are, yeah, that's how we received the application.
Okay.
So, I mean, as far as what they have as a business arrangement, we don't necessarily know every detail of that. But yes, these are the ones that Cindy, these aren't just like, we're not initiating these, these are, we send out all of the requests for renewal and then this is what they come back.
Okay.
If you have ones that you're specifically concerned about, like, like that one, or, we can certainly look further into it for you.
Okay.
No, no, no problem.
I mean, it was just, it was one of those things, just because I, I used to take my car there back in the day, and I, I know they've, they've, that John is retired and they've, I, I believe it's on the, the second tenant since. And same with like the Chengdu Fontan Restaurant Inc. in South Grafton. It was listed under all alcoholic beverages, but I don't believe that building's currently occupied anyways. So just a couple, a couple outliers that I saw.
So, and this is, John Hall has always held the, that Sam's license and is transferring it on January third. So this is a renewal that will then turn into a transfer, but because of the way that the calendar falls, this is, we're doing the renewal and then they'll come in for a transfer.
Perfect. The only other thing was, and I don't know if it's, they have to remain this way because that's the way they were licensed or not, but in going through some of these, like reunion, for example, is referred to three different ways across three different permits. You know, the first one, reunion tap and table, and then parentheses, tap and table one nine eight, then the next one was just reunion tap and table, then one had a table one, a tap and table one nine eight DBA reunion tap and table. So I didn't know if we, you know.
Need to make them consistent across the board?
Yeah.
Yep.
There's also a typo on the Grafton Grill cross line under the music permits. That was a.
We can, we can make those changes.
Appreciate it.
Approving these won't have any effect on the public hearing we had recently where we were issuing suspensions and things like that, right?
No.
Perfect.
Nope. So we do have some, just since we're talking about these, sorry, I was, the licensing person was live texting me the answer, so I look like I know what I'm talking about, which I greatly appreciate. The, the, we do have some non-renewals that you may notice, so Rick's Hilltop on Maple Street in South Grafton, they're closing December thirty-first, so they're not renewing. And the Polish National Home, obviously, is no more, so no more liquor license there. We also have Turtle Top Incorporated on Ferry Street, the property is sold and the business was closed. And then we have one Class Two Ram Auto, which is just non-responsive to our attempts to get the necessary documents, so should that change, then maybe that one will be before you again.
Come on back.
But that's all we've, we've got. Gonna go down a quick list here before you start voting, cuz these are also the frequently asked questions. So currently, the town of Grafton has seven all-alcohol licenses available for restaurants. We have four wine and malt for restaurants as well. Package stores, we currently have zero licenses available. And wine and malt only for a package store, we have three available.
Thanks.
Yeah. It's a very handy list. Always looking for that information, so.
Can you have more restaurants in here?
There you go. There you go.
All right, if the board doesn't have any other questions or comments, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the twenty twenty-three annual licenses as per the attached list for the common, for the following. Common Vittler Garage Licenses one, two, and three, Music Inholder and Pool Table.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye, opposed, declare the motion carried.
I move the board vote to approve the twenty twenty-three annual liquor licenses as per the attached list for the following. Restaurant, all alcoholic beverages. Restaurant, wine and malt. Package store, all wine and, all alcoholic beverages. Package store, wine and malt, inholders, all alcoholic beverages, and club, all alcoholic beverages. Licenses which require a one-ten and three-oh-four inspection are contingent upon a final approval from the Fire Department and Building Department. No liquor license will be issued without an approved certificate of inspection.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. All right. And up next is the Fuel Efficiency Vehicle Policy. William, run through that.
Yes. So in keeping with our ongoing project to review all policies, this by and large is a refresh of the current policy. In checking out a couple of other examples, I found it still pretty current. We picked some of the grammar, some of the formatting, made it pretty to look at and easy to follow essentially. Two things that I do want to focus on with this policy, one is, the town is following it. We budgeted for this fiscal year, we have three Ford Mavericks, which are hybrids coming in to replace three of the municipal vehicles. Those should be here in April. We're pretty excited about those, those could be rad. And in addition to that, we signed on to the National Grid Fleet Advisory Program. So what that is gonna do is we're gonna give them all of the information for the vehicles that we currently have that we're using, make model mileage, all that stuff. And they're gonna help put together a report about those vehicles, when it's gonna be time to replace them, what the fuel efficient or electric options are to replace those, and they're gonna refresh that four times over two years, if I remember correctly from the proposal. So that's gonna be great tool for us moving forward in tandem with this policy.
Great.
Yeah, that National Grid Fleet program's gonna be pretty awesome, very helpful for us to get, you know, understand the comparables and also what we may be able to, to get.
Yeah.
Cuz, well, we have some knowledge, you know, we're, we're replacing three of the Explorers with the three Mavericks, which basically doubles our fuel efficiency per mile. With our ultimate goal of switching the administrative fleet to electric entirely. But how to do that and at what stages, it'd be helpful for, for them to, to help guide us on that, so I'm real excited about that.
Awesome.
What's in that for them?
Go ahead. My guess is, as municipalities and people transfer to hybrids and electric vehicles, it's gonna put more strain on their infrastructure and they need to know where they're going to have those issues. So they get all of our data and we get something in return.
I have a different theory, but I'm not gonna say it.
All right.
Either way, it's a pretty awesome.
Yeah, well, if National Grid cuts our power, that means I guessed right.
You wouldn't know, we go right on the generator.
Did you?
All right. Well, policy with math in it, this is great. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Okay, so I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the Fuel Efficient Vehicle Policy as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. Up next is first across the finish line review. What, what was different between this and the other first across finish line?
So, I, I went back and forth about whether or not to include this in the policy rewrite. I think it'll be good to have on hand, but this was primarily just reformatting it to the new standard.
Okay, so there's nothing that substantially changed, great.
No, one thing to note is that under Chapter one eighty of the Acts of twenty twenty-two, the legislature passed, passed and. The legislature packed, passed an act relative to the, uh, to equity in the cannabis industry. Um, so I did just draft a letter to the CCC about this today.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, sent that out to the Select Board, but also all of our reps and everybody else. So that'll be in your packet for the, the next meeting. Um, as correspondence. Um, so this policy, I think, is fine as it is today as far as reformatting. But sometime in the relatively not-too-distant future. We're probably gonna be looking at some sort of a revision to that because of the way that the legislature has changed. The municipal relationship to HCAs and how those work. So it, it may not even, it, it may be moot entirely. And it, it kinda is a little bit anyways because the cannabis market has tanked a bit and, uh, no one's looking for new sites. So, you know, I, I don't think it harms anything by reformatting it and, you know, putting it in our policy book. I think it has a place just with an eye on the horizon that, you know. We're, we're currently working through some legislative changes that may impact that policy.
Uh, if there's no other questions or comments, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the first across the finish line policy as presented.
Second, motion being seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. We're gonna pass over the road opening and patches procedures review. Uh, we'll bring that back at a later date. We're just waiting for more feedback on that one. And go into department head exit interview policy review. We've talked about this, um, at least once, if not twice at this point. I like that we have the, the questionnaire in it too. So does anybody have any questions or comments about this policy?
When we had discussed it last, we, and it's still, it's in here, I, I couldn't find anything in my notes about it. We discussed making, or at least whether or not we were gonna make it one set. Person as the outside direct report, um, if, if they chose to, uh, for the, for the exit interviews. Uh, here, it's under, uh, number two, face-to-face. Um, outside of the direct reporting chain, i.e. a select board member, alternative department head, or other town volunteer. Uh, I couldn't remember where, where we left that. If we had decided we want to get more specific than that and, and designate the chair as somebody that would conduct those interviews. Or if we had decided to leave it.
No, you inhaled first, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, we worded it like that because there are now employees who report directly to the Select Board. So we wanted to have some flexibility in case that did come up.
The other thought process that at least I had in reading what you wrote was that I, I like this better. Um, because the intent is to get the employee to give us the feedback. And so, um, you know. If you have a designated person on the Select Board, that might not be the comfortable person for that employee to give the information to, right? Especially given the way that, um, you know, the disciplinary process works and, you know, you know. Uh, the grievance process and things like that. It, it, it may just need to be as, this seems more flexible to me and I think it's appropriate in this case.
My feedback in reading this, I liked it better because I, I, after I thought about it and sent an email offering to do some of these. I thought the alternative department head would be maybe a better route, so I think this is great that it includes all of it.
And then, you know, they, then that can be offered to the, the exiting employee, you know. That we just want the information. We're not looking to, you know, do anything else. I saw Anne Marie had volunteered and I was like, whoa. You know, she's such an intimidating person, maybe people aren't gonna give her the information, right?
That's what my kids say.
But no, I, I, I did like the way that you wrote this better than how I was thinking it in my head, so.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments? If not, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the department head exit interview policy as presented.
Second, motion being seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. Um, scheduling our goals meeting. So we had a goals meeting scheduled and then we couldn't get a quorum together due to. This lovely illness that is going around plaguing everybody. So we have to reschedule the goals meeting. I know that Amber's been working really diligently to try to find a date and time for that and. I was under the impression I would be told that for us tonight. My impression could be wrong.
It's not this.
It's, but so it's totally confirmed. Okay, I feel, alright, I feel really good about it then.
Yeah, me too.
That is a Tuesday, the twenty-fourth is a Tuesday. Alright, so the goals meeting is gonna be on January twenty-fourth at the library, I believe from, if I have my memory correct, seven to eight thirty. Uh, more details will be coming out about that and then I'll go right into the next agenda item, which is schedule the Grafton Up and Railroad Public Outreach Meeting. And that's gonna be on Thursday, January nineteenth, also at the library. Okay, so we'll have, we'll push out stuff on social media. We'll, you know, maybe take an ad out in the paper for the Grafton Up and Railroad one, especially. Um, just so people are all aware of what's going on with those two. Um, up next is Select Board Reports. Does anybody have any reports? Alright, well, um, CIPC met this week. We had a joint meeting with the Library Capital Campaign and that was really informative. As to better understanding them as a funding source in general and it seems, um, you know, we got a lot of good information from that and. We'll see where that goes going forward in the capital planning process. And then we plan to meet again in January with the town administrator, um, to kinda go forward with where the plan's shaping up to be. And if there's no more Select Board reports, we can go right into the town administrator reports.
Yep, so I don't have a, a PowerPoint today. Um, but we have been, um, it's only been a week since we last spoke, but we've been pretty busy. Um, one of the things I wanted to, uh, discuss, um, was we are in the middle of our, um, negotiations with our. Our, um, administrative union. Uh, we are also working with, um. The Fire Department and the Police Department on some interim radio upgrades that we need to do to get us through the. The exploration period of the RECC, so, um, you know, we're, we're trying to do things that are not, uh. They're not, they're not, uh, wants, they're strictly needs that we need to accomplish and get our, 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 uh, system a couple. Years down the road. We have a meeting this upcoming week with the CMRPC about them funding and hosting a regional housing coordinator. To try to work with all of the regional, um, communities and help us navigate all these housing issues that are. Are, uh, very complex and time-consuming, so that's pretty exciting. And I, oh, one thing I wanted to note is, uh, if anyone's watching this on either Verizon or on Charter. We are aware that there are issues. Um, in my talking to the folks at GCTV, they appear to be outside of our infrastructure. Um, and so we do have multiple tickets and inquiries in and we've been working through that problem. But it does not see, seem to be something that's in our direct control and the reason that we think that is. One, because of the staff that we, we have on hand, but also, I, I believe if you watch the recording from the following day. Audio and video is perfect and if you watch it live, that's where the problem is. There's probably something, uh, something happening there. Um, last thing is that, uh, coming up the twenty-second, uh, we're gonna be having our staff appreciation luncheon. For the holiday season, so that will be, um. Here, we'll, we'll be, gonna be closing the offices from, uh, twelve-thirty to.
Two o'clock?
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
Two thirty, uh, to reopen again that afternoon and then we will be closed on the twenty-third. Um, so residents should plan accordingly. Having been in municipal government for eight years, there's not a lot of people that come in the day before Christmas Eve to pay their taxes, so. Um, it's not traditionally a very busy time for us, but, um, but we're available, you know, phone, email. Always around, so. Um, but, uh, I think that's, that's all I have.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then moving on to correspondence, does anybody have any correspondence they wanted to discuss? Alright, moving right along to resignation. It looks like Marcia Platt is resigning from the Board of Assessors.
Yes, I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Marcia Platt from the Board of Assessors.
Second, motion being seconded. Any discussion? And we're gonna send her a letter of thanks. Excellent. Um, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. Public comments? Alright, is anybody on Zoom here for public comment?
We have no hands on Zoom.
Fantastic. And then we have four sets of meeting minutes to approve. If nobody has any questions, we can take it in one motion. And if you do, we can take them separately.
No questions.
Great, so we can do it one.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for June twenty-nine, November eight, November twenty-nine, and December sixth of two thousand twenty-two as written.
Second, motion being seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. We have no reason to go into executive session, so I can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion being seconded. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. Good night, everybody.